Ms. Farrell Harrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I am very excited to bring this item before you. I couldn't be more proud of everything that we've accomplished over the past two years, all of us, that you as our mayor and city council, staff, our incredible community, our nonprofit organizations, our faith-based community, all of the residents that give so tirelessly to the city through the commissions and the committees and active representation at all of our meetings. It's been quite a past two years here, and we wanted to have the opportunity to share with you some of the major achievements from 2019 through today that we were able to accomplish despite unprecedented civil unrest, despite a global pandemic, and despite a financial crisis. So as you know, this upcoming Monday, September 27th, we will have the full day strategic planning retreat. This will be the second strategic planning session that we've held this year. This retreat will focus on the five overarching goals and priorities that our city council has identified as being the guide, the roadmap for all of the work that we do over the next three years. A significant component of this work next week will be an analysis of the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, basically what's called a SWOT analysis. But quite honestly, my favorite part is discussing the city's major accomplishments. Oftentimes, our focus is on what has not yet been done and what we still need to accomplish. But I believe that in order to move forward in a positive and in a bold direction, we must take a pause, sit back, and actually take inventory of the tremendous accomplishments we've all made, all of us together, staff and council, the community, all of our incredible partners, the commissions and committees, and everything that makes Costa Mesa such a great place. So in anticipation of the retreat next week, staff from our city departments has prepared a comprehensive presentation for you tonight of the main accomplishments of the city. I'll warn you that the report is robust, and that is because we've done a great amount of work that we should all be proud of. It remains my greatest honor and privilege to be the city manager for the great city of Costa Mesa. In particular, it has been a tremendous honor to work with a mayor and council that is, quite honestly, very smart, very dedicated, and as compassionate as you are. As staff, we often joke about how we need to make sure these staff reports are well-written and that they're, they all make good sense because we know that you read them. You'll often cite from the floor on page 125, I noticed the this and the that. And we know that you are extremely committed and very detail-oriented, and you do a great job on behalf of the citizens. Your leadership during, at least my tenure at the city, has been nothing short of extraordinary and bold, creative, hugely impactful. And I'd just like to say that the employees of this great city have done a prolific amount of work achieving these goals while undergoing, you know, unprecedented circumstances, sometimes working from home, sometimes working in City Hall, often being called to go back home or come in short notice, our public safety teams working around the clock at the height of the pandemic, some of them even falling ill and having to mandate people to come back to work. It's been quite a ride, but I'm honored to lead this incredible executive team and the nine departments that operate every day with such integrity and dedication. And so before we start the actual discussion of the accomplishments, we just wanted to share with you a short video that our award-winning Costa Mesa TV team has put together. It's a promo of what makes Costa Mesa so Costa amazing. And with that, we'll turn it over to our discussion of our accomplishments in each respective goal. And we're going to start with our illustrious, dynamic duo here, our police chief, Ron Lawrence, and our fire chief, Dan Stefano, to talk about all of the accomplishments in the area of public safety. Chief Stefano?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city staff and community, it's a great opportunity to be here. And before we get into the larger pieces of this, I want to say what an honor it is to be part of this amazing team. And I think that's what's going to resonate tonight. You're going to get a snapshot of the accomplishments that have taken place throughout the course of the past couple of years. You're going to hear from the department heads, the department directors. But I think what's important to identify is that each one of us has an incredibly talented staff behind us at every position throughout our organizations. And it's not carried out without the people that are part of us as a team. And that's something that's recognized by the city leadership team. That's something that's recognized by our incredible city manager, who's just an exceptional leader, and of course, by you setting the stage, supporting the efforts, providing the guidance, and really helping drive our mission. So I just want to say thank you. And again, it's an honor to be part of this incredible team much ahead. As far as the first goal that we're going to talk about tonight, it's going to be a tag-team effort with our new police chief, Chief Ron Lawrence, who I've had the pleasure to get to know a short amount of time, and he has certainly hit the ground running. We already have a strong partnership, seamless partnership with our brothers and sisters in blue, and I'm excited that that's going to continue in the days ahead. As far as when we talk about public safety, the first thing that comes to mind is the fact that we are coming back and coming through an unprecedented timeframe. We're all aware of COVID. We are all aware of the navigation of that piece. But as we take the time to go back and look for a moment, before COVID became national news, Costa Mesa was right at the tip of the spear. And we engaged at all levels, whether it be the public safety elements, whether it be through the city council, everyone was running and on point. And we haven't stopped. And public safety in particular has been at the forefront, responding to emergency calls, doing a lot of background work. It's been a challenging time, there's no question. So I am so incredibly proud of the professional men and women that serve in public safety, both in police and fire. It's certainly the reality of it, it takes a big toll. It's taken a toll on everyone in the community. It's taken its toll on everyone throughout the entire world. But I just want to emphasize that piece, that our men and women that have been on the front lines certainly have done an incredible job, and particularly here in Costa Mesa, the best of the best. As we look at the metrics, we're going to just provide some overviews as far as we talk about fire, and then we'll transition, as I said, into police. As we talk about our fire metrics, our call volume stayed essentially the same levels that they were. We had a pause as we came into COVID, and part of that pause, when we talk about emergency response, there was a pause in the March, April, May timeframe when everyone was trying to wrap their heads around, hey, are we going to be taking people to hospitals? The hospitals were starting to get saturated. There was concern if you were going to be more healthy going to the hospital or staying at home. And so once we together navigated through those important pieces, I think we were all able to get a handle on what we could do and couldn't do. But our responses did hit a point in time, and that was not just here in Costa Mesa, not just here in Orange County, it was throughout the state. And so the numbers, we did have about a 7% drop overall in terms of our calls, and that was all equated to that, really, that one-quarter area that we had. In terms of our activities, our activities remain the same and exceeded. We still conducted inspections, some even virtually, and you'll hear from the building department, some of their inspections as well. So we continued the business operations as best we could, over 1,000 inspections that we conducted throughout this course in time, plan checks were at 1,000, which is another part of we do with, we take place in part of the larger community risk reduction and the partnership we have with the building department. As we look at the different calls that we run, we run all types of calls. We're considered an all-hazard, all-risk agency when we talk about fire. People think about, well, you run fire. We run about 70% of our calls are specifically related to EMS, emergency medical services. But we do run a number of fires, about 250 fires a year that we run on, and then a number of other calls, technical rescues, good intent calls, public service calls, a wide range. One of the key areas that we focused on as of late are the response to statewide master mutual aid incidents. And the wildfires that have been ongoing over the course of the past couple of years, we've responded to over 27 wildfires up and down the state. And the master mutual aid system is a great system. It's the most robust system, not only in the United States, but throughout the world. And what it allows us to do is, very strategically, and in a way that's very organized, present the resources to the incidents throughout the state in a shared manner. So right now, Northern California's been burning. So we supply a lot of resources up north, but we still maintain our home bases here at home. We're going to see with the San Ana winds coming in over the course of the next couple of months, a lot more fire activity coming down south. But for us, over the course of the past couple of years, 27 wildfire responses for us outside of our area. That included over 200 days for our personnel to be off-site somewhere else, in addition to maintaining our calls and our resources and the safety of Costa Mesa here at home. And that safety was seamless. Again, we send resources out, we backfill, we're reimbursed through the state for those resources. We don't have any gaps here in the city, so we retain that same level of customer service as far as the city goes. The other key component that we got involved in, and we played a leadership role, specifically Costa Mesa and the Orange County Fire Service, was when we got into the position of helping with vaccinations. What was the solution to this COVID pandemic that took place on a regional scale, on a state scale? Here at Orange County level, the Orange County Fire Service took a leadership role, not just in coming up with a method to take care of the public safety personnel, but to take care of the communities here at home. And so we worked not only the hands-on front lines, providing the vaccinations, but also the leadership. The leadership, we initiated the first sub-pods in Orange County to vaccinate all of our public safety personnel. And then we played an instrumental role, along with our brothers and sisters in blue, an instrumental role across the street over at the fairgrounds, again, with pod management, working with partners throughout Anaheim, with the Anaheim Pod, and then South County and the South County Pods. So a very key role we played, we stepped up in a big, big way. But that doesn't happen if we don't have the support here on the front lines. And again, I come back to the council being supportive every step of the way, the leadership that Lorian's provided and the support, that's how we get things done, providing support, figuring out what resources we need, and then helping provide those resources. And the last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Chief Lawrence, I just want to commend again, as we talk about the collective piece, we've got an incredible, engaged community in Costa Mesa. I mean, the flavor and the power and the passion is there, and that's something very special. That carries through to each and every member of this team and the city team, and it carries through to the council. It was evident when we had different events that went on throughout COVID, and at different points in time, each one of the council members were out at different events, whether it was taking care of the opportunity to look for opportunities to help the community, help with the food efforts, get out and help businesses get back on their feet. Whatever it was, the city council was engaged, start to finish. And that's something to be very proud of. It's certainly something that I'm proud of, and I'm just honored to be part of this Costa Mesa family. It's an amazing thing. And so again, I'll turn it over here to my partner in public safety. I'll step back up in a moment, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, members of the council, I echo what Chief Stefano has commented about the collaboration. I've only been here two weeks, but as your police chief for two weeks, I continue to be amazed at the way the city operates under the great leadership of our city manager, the city council, the staff. And I'm an outsider now coming into this family, new member, and I'm speaking from a very fresh objective. And having 31 years' experience, I can tell you Costa Mesa's doing amazing things and getting a lot of things right. As your police chief, I'm pleased to present just a small, brief summary of the many accomplishments made by the women and men of the Costa Mesa Police Department. You deserve to be very proud of these accomplishments. Like the fire chief, we'll start with our police metrics, and this is really some amazing numbers. You look at 2018, the yellow graph there represents our calls for service. This is where a resource was dispatched out into the community for some level of service or need. And if you think about that, just a minute, I'll take a pause. If you look at 2020, 128,414 calls for service. That's about 352 average per day, or somewhere around 14 to 15 each hour. Now, it's not always that cookie cutter clean, but spread throughout the day. That's a lot. It's a very busy, busy staff we've got. The purple represents our 911 calls, our emergency calls for service, and the green are our non-emergency calls for service. What I really want to take a minute to highlight here is that 98% of our 911 calls were answered within 10 seconds, and this far exceeds the industry standard, which is 90%. Our 911 center do amazing things when they're behind that console and they're dispatching, they're dealing with emotional people on the phone and dealing with the chaos of the moment. They're incredible. I watched one of them give instructions on how to give CPR just last week over the phone. It was incredible. So they do great work. In our area of quality of life in the police department, we've worked with code enforcement to address unlicensed dispensaries. We serve 21 search warrants at different unlicensed dispensaries and closed them down in a joint effort with code enforcement, our fire department, city attorney, and our state Bureau of Cannabis Control. Our community policing unit has been more visible in Costa Mesa with our bicycle patrols. Our CPU officers are part of the network of homeless solutions and through that partnership, offer resources to those in need. It also has been a part of targeted hotel inspections to address ongoing issues, especially at challenging and repeat locations. Partnerships in those inspections include the Network for Homeless Solutions, Code Enforcement, Fire and Rescue, Orange County Healthcare Agency, and the probation department. Our DUI checkpoints are something pretty special here in Costa Mesa. We take DUI enforcement very seriously. We use that to educate our community on the dangers of drinking under the influence of alcohol and drugs, and our checkpoints are funded by a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety. Our DUI checkpoints resulted in 10 DUI arrests and six citations for unlicensed drivers just last weekend. In 2019, the department arrested 560 impaired drivers in the city. In 2020, we arrested 425 arrests. And after re-establishing our DUI enforcement team just this year in 2021, we've already made 795 arrests for DUI in Costa Mesa. During the summer of 2020, the department monitored demonstrations in the city. These were peaceful demonstrations where the department maintained open lines of communications with the organizers to ensure a safe environment for their participants and the public. The department used news releases and social media to inform the community that Costa Mesa PD supports those exercising their First Amendment rights, but we will not tolerate violence, vandalism, destruction of property. I'd like to take just a moment, extend the police department's gratitude for the partnership we have with our code enforcement team and Jennifer Lee. Their assistance in addressing many issues is integral to our enforcement efforts, including the shutdown of unpermitted group homes. And I would invite our city attorney, Kim Barlow, if she would like to speak just a minute on the legal successes we've had in this area.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, the city has been very successful, both at the code enforcement level and in litigation on this point. And without code enforcement and their hard work and the police department, the litigation would not have been as successful as it was. So it truly was a team effort. We have closed down eight unlicensed illegally operating group homes just in the last year. And we have successfully had five operators ordered to close their doors, as well as one, two actually, who agreed to close their doors as a result of our litigation. And so the code enforcement team and the police department were really integral to that effort. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. This next one, I'm pretty excited about, illegal fireworks, because there's not a city in California that doesn't grapple with this issue. And I'm amazed at the numbers in Costa Mesa. In 2019, the department's special investigations team, along with patrol officers in our fire department, seized approximately 4,500 pounds of illegal fireworks and made several arrests. That's a street value of about $25,000. In 2020, there were 200 pounds of illegal fireworks seized, and in 2021, 1,706 pounds of illegal fireworks seized. Those are amazing numbers and a huge success. Moving to enhancements to our emergency operations and response, we had the ability to leverage technology over the last few years. Costa Mesa is one of the first cities in Southern California to have the ability to send out wireless emergency alerts through an integrated public alert and warning system. These urgent alerts, usually a county resource, are sent out to cell phones based on geographic location and depending on what the emergency is. Our emergency services administrator, Jason Dempsey, delivers quarterly emergency and disaster preparedness workshops for City Hall leadership and the city council to prepare and improve the city's response to emergencies. This ensures the city leadership understands its vulnerabilities so that they can be addressed quickly and appropriately. City Hall now has a handbook that's updated regularly with contact information of City Hall staff and external partners and organizations for quick access to those in need during an emergency and crisis. This level of networking is important to meet the demands of a unified and timely response. There have been many recent upgrades in our emergency operations center, including televisions and radios for better communications, interoperability, and situational awareness. The emergency services administrator has also secured equipment valued at $1.4 million using the 1033 program, a law enforcement support program sponsored by the federal government. Crucial public safety equipment procured included a vehicle for investigative services bureau, emergency power items such as multi-fuel generators and public safety radios, as well as other vital public safety equipment. The emergency services administrator is also developing our local hazard mitigation plan, which currently is undergoing through administrative review and will be completed shortly. We also coordinated with the Orange County Healthcare Agency, county and city staff, our fire department, and local other fire departments to facilitate testing and vaccination sites in Costa Mesa at multiple locations, including the Fairgrounds, Senior Center, and National University. We're partnering with the finance department for cost recovery through FEMA and CAL OES, and our current projections expected to exceed $4 million. We've developed a continuity of operations plan to ensure essential city functions are identified, prioritized, and addressed in an emergency. The purpose of the continuity of operations plan, or COOP, is the uninterrupted continuity of each city's department's essential functions in the aftermath of an emergency, so that the city can serve its community without interruption. That plan is currently being developed for each department within the city with the cooperation of department directors and their respective staffs. With the tremendous support of city council and focus on public safety, the police department has made some significant multimillion-dollar improvements and enhancements in our capability to protect and serve our community. We're in the process of remodeling the firearms range and now looking over those planned designs. Once construction starts, we anticipate it'll take between four and six months to complete. In 2019, we introduced texting capabilities to our 911 center and implemented throughout Orange County. Calling 911 in case of an emergency is always best over the phone, but if someone cannot call, now they can use their phone to text 911 to our center. The police department continuously upgrades our security cameras, with one major upgrade accomplished in December of 2019. There are new cameras installed around the department, and we are still working on switching some analog cameras to digital at this time. New equipment approved by city council in April for more body-worn cameras and associated equipment, including in-car camera install, which was accomplished last fiscal year, and all patrol vehicles are now outfitted with updated in-car cameras. Last year, our body-worn cameras were implemented, and this was an important move for the department to assist us in being transparent with the public. Our policy, we have a policy on body-worn cameras, is available to the public, and it's posted on our website, available for anybody to see. Our city council approved the purchase and financing of a mobile command vehicle, which is an essential piece of responding to multi-casualty and multi-agency incidents. It's important to make sure the mobile command vehicle is outfitted correctly to serve the needs of first responders and must be capable to function at times as a command post or an emergency operations center. We're currently reviewing the specifications of the mobile command vehicle and working out details for purchase. Before I turn this back over to Chief Stefano, I want to conclude, for him to conclude the public safety portion, I want to thank you again, city council and our city manager, for your unwavering support of public safety. This truly is Costa amazing, and I'm proud to be your police chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And I'll just add on to the mobile command vehicle. I've got to add on to that piece. That's been one that's been out there for a few years, but that is a piece of equipment that is incredibly important in terms of providing us the ability to have a true command post in any emergency. It became evident during the civil unrest as of late. I've been on a number of incidents where we needed a mobile command vehicle. And while it is out of the police department shop, it's something that's a joint resource for public safety and can be used in any emergency. As we finish up the critical infrastructure for us and we look at the different elements, we are so grateful for Fire Station 1 and what that's provided for us, a 60-year-old fire station, and that's been a platform for us to step into Fire Station 2 over at Baker, that we actually did a walkthrough today with prospective bidders. And so that process is moving forward, and that was identified by this council and approved by this council and moved forward with the design process. So certainly, we look forward to that in the weeks and months ahead as that progresses. In terms of our apparatus, and we talk about having the critical infrastructure to provide the services, the standard for a fire engine in terms of lifespan is 15 years, and then the potential for five years of a reserve fire apparatus. We, for a period of time, some years ago, had apparatus that was pushing 30 years. It was frequently in maintenance, and we had a lot of issues. This council has embraced and supported public safety. We received our third Pierce fire engine. We are now set to get our fourth Pierce fire engine and our Pierce truck. That's going to bring the fleet up to speed and certainly set us well into the future. And then additionally, we made arrangements with the state CAL OES agency, and we were provided an assignment. You have to go through a strenuous process to be assigned an emergency piece of emergency apparatus from CAL OES. And so we've been assigned a Type 1 city fire engine. We've now been assigned a Type 3 wildland engine, and most recently, a Type 6, which is another type of wildland fire engine. What that does for us, it allows us to send those engines out when we respond across the state, keep our resources here at home, but still provide a good, solid backup of reserve apparatus as well. So the critical infrastructure is just that, critical, and we are certainly on the pathway. The last thing I'll end on is my thanks again. We talk about critical infrastructure. We look at the key components as we look at fire and rescue, and public safety is the same. We look at the most important piece of our package is our people. And how we take care of our people, those that serve and those who we serve. And we put a lot of emphasis into that and a lot of effort into that. And there's no question that this council recognizes it, and it's appreciated. Certainly, Lorian has recognized that and the entire staff. Everything that we do in public safety involves every single other member in each department area. We do not move forward if we don't have that collaborative environment. Every element, whether it's finance and Carol's team, whether it's Rajah, who you're going to hear from in a minute, and his efforts with development services, whether it's Jennifer Lee's team in our inspection process, whether it's Brenda Green and the day-to-day operation she's providing, every single element is entwined in what we do. We're grateful for it. We appreciate it that it's recognized, and we'll continue to carry public safety as a priority. We thank you for doing so. So again, appreciate the time, and I will now yield it to the gentleman who needs no introduction, our very own Rajah Sethraman.
You have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, city council members, staff, city manager, Costa Mesa community, I'll be presenting our accomplishments on your goal, maintain and enhance the city's infrastructure, facilities, equipment, and technology. Before I go through, I want to echo what Chief Stefano said. None of these would have been possible, would be possible without your leadership, without your direction through your budget, you identify projects that we implement, and our incredible city manager and the leadership team together cooperate on many of these projects. The city has an award-winning public services team that not only delivered major projects recently, but were also recognized by their peers with various awards. Arlington Drive Byers Well, this has an outstanding environmental engineering award. City Hall EV charging stations, outstanding energy project. Permanent bridge shelter on airway, outstanding small project. Again, small, it's because it's a dollar value of less than $5 million. Donald Duggan Library, outstanding architectural engineering projects. These projects and many others have the distinction of being on time and on budget. We have several projects that are currently in design phase, and these include $2.8 million improvements for Jack Hammitt's Ford Spark. These improvements include more parking spaces, storage buildings, and accessibility improvements. $1.6 million for the police department range remodel, as Chief Lawrence mentioned. This project brings this range to meet current standards. One of the important goals identified by the council is to invest in active transportation. Several projects are in the works. Several projects are in the works, including a major project for active transportation enhancements on Adams Avenue corridor. A $2.9 million upgrades that includes improvements at Adams and Pine Creek intersection, as well as Adams Avenue between Fairview and Harbor to improve bike lanes and pedestrian access to OCC, adjacent to OCC. And $10 million in active transportation improvements to Adams between Royal Palm and Santana River. We recently came to you, and you approved undergrounding on Adams, on a portion of that corridor. So that's part of that $10 million. We have several projects that are underway in the West Side as part of the West Side Restoration Project, and this includes new bike racks, beautification, place making, bike lanes, sharrows, and other pedestrian enhancements. We are working on a rehabilitation project for the entire five-mile stretch of North and South Newport Frontage roads between Bristol and 19th Street with an estimated cost of $5.3 million. So these improvements include new pavement, storm drain, and bicycle facility improvements. And I want to point out that this is all being done despite the COVID issues we are having. We deal with it on every day in construction. For example, our elevator project got delayed because one of the technicians got COVID and had to work on this. We had supply chain issues. But despite all that challenges, we are continuing to meet the goals. The public services team is proud of its recently completed projects, and these include the council chamber upgrade, where we are sitting right now. $2.7 million to technology and facilities to these chambers, to conference room 1A, and the community room. $4.4 million for the bridge shelter. Mary McWay Active Transportation Improvements, very proud of this project. This is the first Class IV bicycle facility in the city. It includes a pedestrian crossing signal, pavement rehabilitation, and landscape improvements. Lions Park Projects, it's a $38 million investment in the West Side, and that includes the new library, Norma Hertz Park Center, and the Lions Park Playground. And we have the first public charging stations in the city at the city hall. So the investments that you have approved and we implemented has paid dividends. Just in the last three years, over 10 million square feet of new pavement was improved. In addition to street pavement, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters were also improved. This has resulted in the city scoring a PCI of 86.5, which is an excellent category among the ratings. So that's the highest rating you can get on the PCI, and our value of PCI is second highest among cities that have over 100,000 population. We have improved over 300,000 square feet of alleys in the last three years. Over the past 12 years, we have improved 105 of the 130 alleys in the city. At this rate, we'll be done with all the alleys by 2025. And when I say we improved, these are done in concrete. They would last the next 100 years. So it's long-lasting improvements that we are making. We have added 13,000 feet of new medians. You see them even recently on Fairview Road that the mayor acknowledged. This helps in preventing some major accidents like broadside and also helping controlling So the city is making significant investment in transportation, especially in the area of active transportation. But that's not all. We are conducting many studies, several studies, to identify needed improvements in the community. Our community is very engaging, very active, and looking for various, for us to address various issues. And the studies include local road safety plan, pedestrian master plan, and citywide parking study. We have held several community meetings on all these studies, and will be coming to you shortly in future meetings for direction on these various issues, various topics. We have improved over seven miles of bicycle facilities. Several more are in the pipeline. We have added 96 bike racks, and additional ones are on the way. We have captured $3 million in grant funding over the past three years to improve traffic signal infrastructure in the city, throughout the city. Other cities have spent their own money to do these things. We have done quite a bit of signal work using grant funds. And these improvements also help active transportation by adding pedestrian countdown heads, audible pedestrian push buttons, cameras to detect bicycles, and modifying signal timing to allow for increased pedestrian and bicycle crossing times. Want to point out, one of the important function of public services is maintenance. Our maintenance division is responsible for all parks, streets, facilities, and equipment. And I want to shout out to our maintenance team, who throughout the COVID, when people were working from home, they showed up to work every day doing the maintenance work. We own and maintain over 24,000 trees in the city, 463 acres of parks, fields, parkways, and medians. Our fleet section, they maintain over 330 vehicles and range all types, from motorcycles to large fire apparatus. Our maintenance team has the reputation of cleaning graffiti efficiently, and we're recognized for that many times. Over the past three years, they have responded to over 3,700 calls, and most of them are addressed within hours. We have installed catch basins filters to catch debris before it enters into the storm drain, and we have implemented this on all major corridors. In addition, prior to rainy season, our street crews clean up, vacuum every single storm drain, all 1,100 storm drains throughout the city. In addition, our street crews have removed over 8,500 bulky items, furniture and mattresses that were left in our right-of-way over the past three years. So we've been quite busy. Two years ago, you, the city council, identified energy and sustainability as an important goal and created the position of Energy and Sustainability Manager. We are proud of various accomplishments that were achieved during the past 18 months. Over 6,000 street lights were replaced with LED as part of an ACE program. This has resulted in initial credit of half a million dollars and an annual savings of $80,000. We received a grant of $160,000 for the purchase of a zero emission bus that will be used for the senior center. We received grants of over $200,000 towards the construction of the charging stations that are out in front. Our Sustainability Manager hosted educational webinars on organic waste and on Earth Day. I started the presentation as public services being an award-winning team, and we have a couple more awards that we are proud of. Costa Mesa is awarded as Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. Just last year, we planted over 175 trees in city's parks and parkways. Finally, we are proud of the LEED's Gold City Designation awarded by the U.S. Green Building Council to Costa Mesa for its sustainability efforts on various fronts. We are one of the four cities in the nation and first in Orange County to get this recognition in 2020. This is in addition to receiving LEED Gold Certification for three city buildings. So in closing, I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate our city manager's leadership and our team, entire team, for everything that I have listed. And thank you very much for indulging me with this presentation on public services accomplishments. And I'll pass this on to our IT Director, Stevie Lee.
The Costa Mesa IT Department is a full-city service department, meaning that we serve all departments, including police and fire. The department has made several investments in technology. For instance, Planet Bids. Planet Bids is an online software used to post requests for proposals, RFPs, and also respond to submit their bids electronically. Land Management System by Tyler Technologies. We're working with the Development Services Department to replace the outdated, unsupported system currently used by department staff. Waitwhile. Waitwhile, a people queuing system, was installed to eliminate lines and encourage social distancing for when city hall reopened to the public while still in the pandemic. The system also provides analytics to improve the customer service experience, and at this point, we think that Waitwhile is going to be a standard for the city. New Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP. We are working with Finance Department to begin the procurement process to implement a new financial system to replace our 26-year-old PeopleSoft system. Granicus Legistar. We worked with the city clerk's office to implement Granicus Legistar, our new online agenda management system. Zoom. We were early adopters of Zoom meetings at the beginning of the pandemic. Because of this, the city clerk has been asked by other cities to show them how we use it during our city meetings. Budget Software. We are working with the Finance Department to assist them with their new budgetary reporting The department has also been engaged in several network improvements. The installation of the network at the bridge shelter. VPN, Virtual Private Network. When the pandemic hit and it was clear that city staff needed to telecommute, IT set up private, virtual private networks for all employees who needed to work from home. We purchased 150 laptops in a two-week period, set them up, and distributed them to all employees. Wi-Fi Coverage at City Hall. We rebuilt Wi-Fi coverage at City Hall and the police department to ensure full building coverage, which meant that we ended up putting in over what's called 72 endpoints or antennas within these buildings. PC Upgrades, 280 desktops. We finished Phase 1 of the desktop installment and almost finished Phase 2 of the PC upgrades, which provide greater efficiencies for the employees. Our Backup System. We also upgraded our backup system for both city hall and police department to ensure viable backups for disaster recovery. The upgrade cut back on our backup time in half, so recovery is that much quicker. Information Technology Metrics, Help Desk. IT manages a help desk for all technology calls. For example, we have over 1,200 programming tickets and 4,800 networking tickets resolved within the 18- to 20-year period. The updates to the PCs, the refresh, reduce the need for computer assistance, thereby reducing our help desk volume by 27%. Seamless Docs. We introduced Seamless Docs, an online document and electronic signature software, into our environment. Each year since the implementation, we've seen a significant increase of employees' use from the year before, and we're now at about 140% total increase since we started with the Seamless Docs system. The next biggest thing is cybersecurity within the department. On an average, this city receives over 56,000 potential attacks in a week, all of which need to be vetted and eliminated. We do this by leveraging multiple layers of security using security appliances and software. We also use security training software to recognize, to help staff recognize phishing attempts. For example, not too long ago, the city clerk received an email from the city manager's office asking to purchase $5,000 in gift cards, instructing them not to tell anybody that it was a secret. The city clerk recognized what it was, notified IT and the city manager's office, and the phishing email was deleted. We train employees by using security software, sending out phishing emails internally to see if anybody's going to click on the link or attachments. When an employee does click on a link and attachments, and they do, they are notified by the system of what they did, and then it sends them a short video to show them what to do next time in that situation. Just recently, Jason Dempsey, the city's Emergency Service Administrator, organized a briefing with the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, Okayak. The Okayak representative briefed management on what the current threat landscapes looks like in municipalities. It was a very eye-opening experience and solidifies the need to train and have direct processes in place. And at this point, I'd like to thank council for their support in IT and the leadership of our city manager. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Lee from Development Services.
I'll be presenting this evening regarding city council's goal to diversify, stabilize, and increase housing to reflect community needs. The planning and development environment in Costa Mesa and citywide has experienced an unprecedented change over the last few years, with a myriad of housing-related regulations being approved at the state level, as well as changes in our community's housing needs on the ground. Costa Mesa has made significant strides in addressing homelessness, long-range planning for the future, and ensuring Costa Mesa plans for housing options for all segments of our community. I'll begin with a brief summary of planning and development metrics. Our planning and building public counter in Costa Mesa is one of the busiest in Orange County, with an average of 15,000 in-person public counter visitors per year. With the closures experienced during the COVID pandemic, the city still received over 16,000 customers contacts via email, phone, and online portals. In addition to our busy customer service counter, staff are bringing approximately 130 development application items to the Planning Commission and City Council each year. Our professional building staff conduct 1,500 plan checks per year, and we issue over 3,000 building permits each year. Our building safety inspection staff conduct approximately 28,000 inspections per year. And in the last two years alone, 500 new housing units have been approved and completed, with over 1,100 new housing units completed in the current housing element cycle over the past several years. And this is in addition to major commercial construction projects like the new Vans Office Headquarters expansion, Andoral Office Headquarters at the Press Site, and the Orange County Museum of the Arts, both under construction as we speak. Costa Mesa boasts a healthy and a fast-paced planning and development environment. In addition to our high-octane day-to-day development services operations, the city has also pushed forward a number of important, long-range policy planning efforts. First, understanding the significant policy work that would be coming our way, we proactively applied for state grant funds and received $650,000 in SB 2 and LEED grant funds to be used for long-range planning for housing. In early 2019, the city council approved the city's first small cell wireless ordinance and design guidelines to respond to community concerns about the proliferation and aesthetics of these installations in residential neighborhoods. The city council adopted a well-thought-out ordinance that both complied with federal regulations regulations and addressed our local residents' concerns. In 2019, and then revised in 2020, the City Council adopted its first ordinances allowing for accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are largely viewed as a way to promote additional, more affordable housing units in established residential neighborhoods without impacting the fabric of the neighborhood. Since the council adopted these ordinances, the number of ADU applications received by the city per year have doubled. In addition to ADUs, the city participated heavily in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, process in 2019 and 2020. Last year, the council approved and directed staff to submit an appeal of the methodology and Costa Mesa's RENA allocation of 11,760 housing units to be planned for over the next eight years. Although the city's appeal was denied, as were all other appeals by Orange County cities, staff has continued to work closely with the state as to expectations and the future RENA process. While submitting our appeal and managing the COVID pandemic at the same time, staff also began preparing the city's 2021 to 2029 general plan housing element update. The housing element is essentially the city's high-level blueprint for housing-related policy and action items over the next eight years. And we began that process with a significant community outreach effort. For the first time, the city used outreach tools like Zoom, supported by our IT Department, to hold online community meetings during the pandemic, and we provided informational materials and held those meetings in both English and Spanish also for the first time. The city has completed a public review draft housing element, and council-directed staff at the last study session to submit that draft to the state for review. Ultimately, the housing element will come back to the city council for final approval, and it will result in several additional long-range plan updates over the next three years that promote good neighborhood planning and more affordable housing. The City Council also proactively engaged the state regarding the future use of the Fairview Development Center site. As you may recall, at the very beginning of the pandemic, the city's attorney's office engaged the state and the federal government in litigation regarding the use of the Fairview Development Center to house COVID-19 patients without a proper plan. I'd like at this time to invite our city attorney, Kim Barlow, to comment on that litigation.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Yes, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. That was a wonderful and slightly unexpected decision that the council made to direct us to move forward with that effort. At the time, COVID was still new in California. We knew that there were patients who had, who had been diagnosed with this, at that time, untreatable, uncurable disease, who were in Northern California, and the state and federal government came up with a plan to just move them to Costa Mesa without a plan. So, thinking that was not a good idea, we did engage in that litigation, and it was happily a success. And it allowed not only for Costa Mesa not to be the epicenter of COVID in Southern California, but allowed the city to plan for and be sort of ahead of the curve with respect to responding to COVID-19 as a result of how much we learned about that disease and what was going on and not going on at the government level. So that was a very happy result of the council's very wise direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Following our success, the council created a Fairview Development Center ad hoc committee and held multiple meetings with the state representatives, and ultimately made specific recommendations to the state for the reuse of Fairview Development Center for housing. And these recommendations are reflected in the draft housing element being submitted to the state. Next, at the direction of the City Council, staff also initiated preparation of an inclusionary housing ordinance, which will be presented to the City Council for further direction. And lastly, last year, the City Council adopted a moratorium on whole-home short-term rentals in response to resident concerns regarding community impacts. Staff has initiated the preparation of a short-term rentals program for permitting and overseeing short-term rentals, which will be presented to the council for further direction. On top of our day-to-day operations and significant policy planning work, Development Services have pivoted and flexed and reallocated our resources to address the impacts of the pandemic. The City Council adopted a moratorium on both commercial and residential tenant evictions during the pandemic. The City Council also adopted a 24-month extension of discretionary planning entitlements to provide some certainty to the development community and allow developers who were already in the process additional time to respond to pandemic conditions. The City Council relaxed requirements, allowing food banks, drive-throughs, and curbside food services to address food security concerns at the beginning of the pandemic. And the council suspended the 30-day stay limit for short-term occupancy motels in response to pandemic conditions. Last but not least, for the first time, staff conducted virtual building inspections and maintained its service goals of next-day building inspections throughout the pandemic. The city also allowed for online and electronic application submissions to ensure city business kept running despite the pandemic. Despite many obstacles over the last few years, our Planning and Development Services Department have overcome and made significant strides towards planning for housing accessible to all segments of our community and toward addressing homelessness. With that, I'd like to thank the council and the city manager for their support and for the dedication to the goals that we all share. And with that, I will turn it over to Susan Price, our Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
Good evening, Costa Mesa, and to our honorable mayor and city council members and our esteemed leadership here tonight. A lot has been covered in all of the different things that our departments have been working on, and one of the crown jewels for our city that really embodies multiple years of effort is the Airway Shelter, the permanent site for Costa Mesa's Bridge Shelter at 3175 Airway. I want to just take a moment to thank everyone, literally everyone, who participated in making this a reality, going back to the mid-2007 Homeless Task Force that was created, to the Network for Homeless Solutions, to the City Council, this one and the one before it even, and all of our department heads. It was no small task, and not, of course, being able to predict that we would be, under the year of COVID, that we would be transitioning, in effect, from the Lighthouse Church, which was a 50-bed shelter, over to a fully constructed, beautiful, 72-bed shelter on Airway that was designed and with a lot of interior design and love by IKEA, to be able to create a facility that we can all be proud of. And one thing I just want to say, take a moment, for the vulnerable in our community during COVID, and the way that our city has wrapped the services around this population, not just from the housed and the unhoused, but the most vulnerable among us by the food programs that have been done and other safety net programs that our city council has outlined over time. So I want to start off, before I go too much into the safety net, I want to just highlight again what it took to get the Airway site realized for our city, and some of the key things that I've been working on since I've come to Costa Mesa. Right in the middle of this, actually, right as COVID started, I think I got sent home. But I will say that we were able to successfully negotiate an agreement with our neighboring city of Newport Beach, and it couldn't have been more impactful on a number of levels, not just to support the initiative and the work that we were doing, but to be able to have kind of a financial commitment from our neighboring city on creating a regional approach to address homelessness, is something that I find to be the foundation of success, in addition to, of course, having a very strong village, which we have here in Costa Mesa. So in our efforts with the city of Newport Beach, we were able to negotiate 1.6 million to contribute to the capital improvement project that Rajah Seth Raman was mentioning earlier, received an award for the effort on that construction project. In addition to that, $1 million annually for the 20 set-aside beds that Newport is receiving at our shelter. And it's not just the beds themselves. I have to impart that our street outreach teams, our police liaison, homeless liaison officers, and our community policing efforts have become integrated in our response to homelessness. We often find that we are addressing maybe some of the same people, and we're able to get them the type of help that they need, and it's because we have a shelter in our city. There are only nine cities out of 34 in the county of Orange that host and operate a shelter, and that is no small task, but with the wraparound Network for Homeless Solutions that we have in Costa Mesa, it makes for a very robust and rewarding experience overall. Additionally, we received a $2.5 million grant from the county of Orange, and that was requiring of a regional approach, which we were already aligned with and on board with, and Newport has been an amazing partner. Starting in May, May 1st of this year, they started doing their intakes, and it's been a really seamless approach up to now. I want to mention that our occupancy right now in the shelter is 47, 31 for Costa Mesa, 16 for Newport Beach. Over the course of the pandemic, though, we were operating at the lighthouse at half occupancy because of the public health, social distancing requirements, and everything that we were dealing with. So when the Airway site actually was done being constructed, we moved over, I think, 16 clients. So from this point now, at 47 clients, we are just starting to come out of an experience where we were restricted on our occupancy, so we're getting to a fuller occupancy. And then I wanted to mention some of the other safety net programs that we have done over the course of the pandemic. There were two tranches of funding that the City Council approved on rental assistance. So as Ms. Lee talked about, the eviction moratorium was coming. We were tracking on all of these things coming down from the state and federal government and looking at how that was going to impact the renters in our community. And so this City Council took that forward leap to allocate the first tranche of money and the second tranche of money to assist both families and individuals in our city with gap rental assistance that were impacted by the economic impacts of COVID. And additionally, as we had the lower occupancy in the shelter over the last year, we've received a lot of calls for service from our constituency and our residents. One of the things that we did during COVID was we changed the phone number. We had the non-emergency police line listed as the number to call for homeless outreach. We changed that. During COVID, we now have a 24/7 line that's answered by our social services team, the Network for Homeless Solutions, and Mercy House at the shelter. Now that that is a 24/7 location, we dispatch the calls from there rather than from our police dispatch line. And then lastly, I just want to put a shout out to our code enforcement officer, Mike Brumbaugh, who's doing an amazing job with our local businesses. He actually wakes up our city every morning at 4:30 and spends a lot of time out there with our businesses, trying to assist them in just rebuilding our economy, getting people the help that they need, filling the shelter up with people that we know we can help. And I'm happy to report, you know, every time we put the data out, it's a little bit higher than it was. We're at 186 people housed here in Costa Mesa. As a result of this council's leadership and its efforts, 186 souls are permanently housed in the city of Costa Mesa. I couldn't be more proud of you and of us and of this team and of our constituency for the type of support that we get on our outreach calls. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It is my honor to present to you tonight the financials over the last two years, particularly as it is with outstanding Finance Department and its partners, not only in the other city departments in our city council, as well as our community. The city of Costa Mesa's Finance Department is an award-winning finance team. We have been receiving an award-winning financials from our GFOA, which is our Government Finance Officers Association that represents the entire United States and Canada. For the past 20 years, we've been recognized for excellence in our reporting of finances, for our CAFR, and our budget. In September of last year, approximately six months into COVID, the city received a phone call from Standard &amp; Poor's indicating their interest in rating our 2017 lease bonds as a result of COVID. It is my honor to present to you today the results of that presentation with them and multiple meetings we did have as it relates to our financials. They came back with a very strong economy, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong management profiles. They were able to achieve these ratings for us as a result of the aggressive nature that we took in our finances, particularly at the onset of COVID. For our financial metrics, our day-to-day outside of COVID, the city's Finance Department processes over 18,000 payroll payments every year. We have over 9,000 customer payments processed over our treasury counter annually. 7,000 accounts are paid through our Accounts Payable Division. In our treasury division, we process over 10,000 businesses, business licenses annually, and under our new Planet Bids platform, we have procured 38 bids, the vast majority of them in public services for our capital projects. The last three years of balancing budgets, needless to say, has been challenging. Coming into halfway through our 2021 proposed budget season in March of 2020, COVID hit. That last quarter of 1920, we essentially had to turn around our processes of looking into 21, 2021 budget and halting 1920 budget. We identified, early onset in early April, came to the council with an aggressive cost containment plan to put a stop-hold on our 1920 budget to be able to get ahead of our general fund loss that we were anticipating at that time to be around $10 million. As a result of our cost containment plan, that we were able to pull the trigger immediately, and by this I mean the city's Finance Department processed over 360 contractual obligations to put a stop-hold on any expenditures that were not deemed essential at that time. Departments were asked to cut back $10 million in the last quarter of the fiscal year. We ended the general fund essentially balanced. We did not have to dip into reserves. We left $167,000 on the table of $142 million budget. During this timeframe, we also created a disaster fund, where we're able to effectively and efficiently track every single expenditure dollar across all the departments. We set up a filing system where all of the departments were to effectively and efficiently document all of their expenditures, ready for FEMA or any other type of emergency fund that would be thrown our way. That process continues to today. In 1920, we received over $900,000 of CARES Act to cover our city's cost. We ended that last quarter, three months, with $3.4 million in expenditures related to the emergency. In May, approximately four weeks after COVID disaster containment plan hit, we were able to come to the council with a 2021 balanced budget, knowing full well that our sales tax and our TOT tax, our hotel tax, were to be reduced significantly in 2021. The state had essentially shut down businesses. We were working with businesses to make sure that they could continue their funding, at the same time knowing full well that the city's coffers were being reduced. Every single department came to the table. Every single department reduced. Every single department reduced $10.7 million of expenditures. We saw 96 part-time positions leave the building. 54 part-timers were laid off, 36 were furloughed. The Finance Department processed over 3,000 refunds as a result of the parks and recreational programs coming to a halt. Looking forward, at this time, the city's Finance Department is currently closing the books. We are not anticipating using any of the reserves that we had requested city council at the onset of COVID. During 2021, the American Rescue Plan came. We were awarded $26.5 million, half of it we've already received. The state provided $1.4 million of CARES Act. You may recall that the city in December, with the approval of the city council, approved $2 million small business grants to be awarded. The city's Finance Department was able to cut checks of $10,000 to small businesses within seven days of council action, just in time for the Christmas holidays. We have also received and expended from Project Runkie about $370,000. Our total expenditures at this time are estimated about $4 million in the emergency fund. Looking forward into 2122, as a result of the aggressive cost containment plan implemented by the city council, the city departments, as a cohesive unit, the leadership team came together and did what was done to be able to contain costs. We are now in a very well position to start our charting our path to economic recovery. And in 2122, it was my honor to present to you a balanced budget reinstating reductions that were taken in 2021, bringing back citywide services to pre-pandemic levels. We restored the CAN. As you may remember, one of the cuts in 2021 was reducing our capital asset needs funds. In essence, Rajah's capital funding was reduced to $2.2 million that was fully reinstated. We realigned our staffing levels. We brought back all those part-time staff members in parks. We funded some of the defunded positions that we had to undertake as part of the 2021. And we also funded year two of our IT strategic plan. During this time, as we're still managing COVID, managing FEMA calls, trying to secure more emergency funding, we're also taking advantage of diversifying our revenues. In fiscal year 1819, the fire department brought forth an ambulance transportation program. As a result of that program, the city's continuing to realize $3 to $3.5 million of general fund revenues. I want to take a moment to thank the fire department for that foresight. That fund definitely helped during COVID. The fire department in 2018, alongside Development Services, also brought forth some changes in the cost recovery fees for their areas. It's generated over $825,000 for our general fund. We also developed our sidewalk vetting regulations. As you may recall, the state passed sidewalk vetting regulations. City of Costa Mesa had the foresight to impose not only the business license, make sure that there was some health regulations in place, and allow for them on our city streets. During COVID, we've expanded our credit card and online payment options for contactless solutions. The city was still taking in funds during COVID, during city hall shutdown. Approximately over a year and a half ago, as a result of the declining technology, the city came forth to the council, which was adopted realignment of our CAN. We had 5% of general fund going towards capital asset needs, 1.5% towards our capital asset needs reserves. We realigned that 1.5% to go to our IT strategic plan to help fund our replacement of our much-needed software. We continue to receive over $1 million to $1.5 million a year as a result of our ROPS repayment program. This is a direct revenue source as a result of the redevelopment agencies being eliminated by the state a few years ago. As you also may recall, a couple of years ago, the city council also brought forth a Section 115 plan. We developed that plan this last year. We deposited those funds into a trust. This helps offset our pension obligations and some of our other OPEP obligations. The city also takes advantage of CalPERS prepayment plan. In this case, our pensions are reduced by about $800,000 a year as a result of prepaying our unfunded liability. Over the last year, we also brought forth to the city council Measure X and Measure Q realignments. For Measure X, we have updated our cost recovery fees. For Measure Q, we included a plan to bring forth seven FTEs, two of them in police, for police officers. We implemented new cost recovery fees. We adopted a 7% tax rate, half of a percent going towards our arts master plan, the other half of percent going to a first-time homebuyers program. At this time, I will turn it over to Jennifer Lee, our Development Services Director.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. The next part of my presentation will be focused on our economic development plan. Part of fiscal sustainability and diversifying revenues is having a robust economic development program. And under the leadership of our former mayor and now county supervisor Katrina Foley, Mayor Stevens, and Mayor Protem Mar, the city formed Restore Costa Mesa during the pandemic. This group consisted of a collaboration between over 40 Costa Mesa businesses, council leadership, and a staff team to promote communications between our business community and the city during the pandemic. At the same time, staff launched the city's Business Assistance Collaborative, which provided an online hub for businesses to connect with economic development staff, post information about their businesses, like business hours of operation, or for restaurants, whether or not that restaurant had food delivery during the pandemic. And these items were offered during the pandemic specifically to spur communication with our business community. The Costa Mesa BAC provided another way for local businesses to stay up to date on the latest, from information from state and local business grant opportunities, all the way to the latest COVID guidelines updates. Staff launched a call center, reallocating over 20 city staff members to call each business in Costa Mesa to connect with them and to find out more about how the city could help. At the same time, staff launched a Shop Local campaign, marketing Costa Mesa small businesses through social media, online information, and you may have seen our Shop Local banners at our local bus stops as well. For the Restore Costa Mesa program and our Business Assistance Collaborative, the city won an ACCO Golden Hub of Innovation Award. We're very proud of that accomplishment, and we're proud to be able to connect with and support our business community. In an unprecedented move to support our local businesses as well, in December of last year, the city council allocated over $3 million in CARES Act funds and $2 million in general fund to fund the Small Business Relief Grant Program and the city's Bridge Grant Program, which provided grant funds to over 450 local businesses during the pandemic. These programs focused on restaurants and personal care services, which were among the hardest hit by the pandemic and the state public health guidelines for businesses. As Carol mentioned, staff delivered those grant checks in record time, within two weeks, with the vast majority being expedited and issued prior to the December holidays. On top of our $5 million small business grant program, the city council suspended normal regulations and staff issued over 70 temporary use permits so that restaurants could move their operations outdoors and establish outdoor dining areas, religious assembly areas outdoors, and outdoor retail shopping areas as well. During this time, staff maintained its partnerships with businesses like South Coast Plaza that contribute to the city's economic engine. And within a two-week period, we worked with our partners at South Coast Plaza to plan, approve, inspect, and construct South Coast Plaza's outdoor pavilion and the north-end parking structure, which provides a high-end retail experience outdoors with access to over 15 South Coast Plaza boutique retail spaces. Last, but certainly not least, staff initiated preparation of the city's first Economic Development Strategic Plan scope of work. The city council approved that scope of work last month, and staff will be releasing the RFP to move forward with that significant economic development planning effort very shortly. With that, I'd like to thank the council and the city manager's office for their leadership and our shared goals in economic development, and I will turn it over to Cosma Lee. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. One of the key roles in the human resources is the recruitment and selection process. So I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of our recruitment efforts since 2019. We posted 173 jobs, processed 16,000 applications, certified over 1,200 candidates onto our eligibility lists, and hired 412 employees, including 159 full-time employees and 225 part-time employees. In addition, we promoted 108 employees. Despite the pandemic, we were able to continue our recruitment efforts with over 11,000 applications and 236 hires in 2020 and 2021 to date. During this time, we hired and promoted a number of key positions in the city. This includes key executive positions such as the city manager, assistant city manager, Parks and Community Services Director, police chief, Economic and Development Services Director, and the Finance Director. With regards to public safety staffing, this continues to be a priority. We hired 82 full-time public safety hires, including 51 sworn police and fire positions. For the first time since 2012, we were at 130-plus sworn police officers. Two sworn officers were dedicated to the implementation of the retail cannabis program. We continue to have active succession planning amongst all ranks of the police and fire and rescue, including promotion of 25 full-time sworn positions. We're also the first Orange County city to deliver cert basic training utilizing the new curriculum. We also continue to focus on staff development to include releasing an RFP for succession planning, preparing for the launch of Costa Mesa University, and implementing training and wellness programs for our employees. In addition to conducting 100-plus recruitments and processing 11,000-plus applications in 2020 and 2021, we've also had to manage a pandemic while keeping the health and safety of our employees as a top priority. In response to COVID-19, we have had 103 employee COVID-positive cases. We've had a robust contact tracing program in which we conducted contact tracing for over 604 employees, which resulted in 241 employees being quarantined. We also had to coordinate 620 COVID tests for employees to date. Having employees in quarantine has created difficulties and challenges for departments who must coordinate staffing coverage and backfills in order to continue to provide services to the public. During this time, we also negotiated the equivalent of a 5% furlough across all employee groups, resulting in a savings of over $3 million. The city continues to focus on employee COVID response and monitors updated regulations and health orders as they are released while continuing our focus on recruitment efforts in all departments. The HR team would like to thank the city council, the city manager, and the city management team for their ongoing support in recruiting and retaining high-quality employees. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Parks and Community Services Director, Jason Minter, to discuss our engagement with the community.
Good evening, Colonel Mayor and Council. Jason Minter, as Cosma mentioned, Parks and Community Services Director. When I joined the Costa Mesa team, it was mid-pandemic and not the easiest time for transition, as my department had been hit pretty devastatingly by the closure of parks, the cancellation of programs, and most importantly, the unprecedented layoffs to the staff in my department, mostly part-time, as mentioned by Carol earlier. So despite the challenges, people in Parks and Rec, they tend to be very resilient, and if one door closes, we look for other opportunities. One of the most important stats that I'd like to share with you is that over 170,000 meals were distributed to seniors in our community through our staff and staff from the volunteer organizations that we work with. In addition to that, over 380,000 pounds of groceries were delivered or distributed to community members in and around Costa Mesa. Transportation services, which is vital especially for the senior population, we provided 6,700 rides for things like errands, trips to the pharmacy, and medical appointments. In addition to those types of services, we were able to still continue restoration days over the last couple of years, having 23 at Fairview Park. Now on to the good news, the doors that opened also when we're getting ready to reopen. In the summer of 2021, we had 88 softball teams. And for a director that was new to the city and had yet to really see programs and operations, seeing people out on the fields again was much relief. We had over 28,500 hours of youth sports fields permitted, and that's in 2021 alone as we continue to grow back from the pandemic. And that's with staff navigating the health guidelines as issued by the state, county codes, as well as working with the district to make sure that all of our fields and all of our participants were safe. And, you know, we have many of our youth baseball participants here in the audience tonight. We're users of those fields, both city and district-owned. So congratulations to them, and we're glad to have them as users of our fields and facilities. In addition, recently, we had over 220 participants in our summer day camps. Again, a great program to see, to visit a park, you know, on a hot summer day and see kids out gathering together, playing different games and activities, as only Parks and Rec staff can put on. The Aquatic Center, probably the most-used facility in our Assembly this last year, mostly because aquatics programs were allowed to reopen probably earlier than most. And with a relatively small pool and restrictions as to how many swimmers could even be at the pool at one time, staff found a way to increase users at the pool by over 54%, which is pretty remarkable. So with the shifting of staff and hours, we were able to get more people doing more laps during a time when the public needed it the most. In addition, we had over 50 community events. And I might want to add that most of these are free to the public. These events include things like Movies in the Park, or, as we adapted this year, Movies in the Parking Lot. So we thank our partner Ikea for allowing us to use their parking lot for one of the movies. We did a movie in the parking lot at the Costa Mesa Senior Center, and we did some at the parks, both at the Lions Event Lawn and at Teewinkle Park. And I really do appreciate staff's time and ingenuity in making these things happen at a time when this was not necessarily normal behavior. I would also like to point out that the Arts and Culture Master Plan, another big deal for our department that was recently approved earlier this year, that's given us direction and vision for the recreation or the inception of new programs here in the community. And as I said before, as staff continue to evaluate, it's not easy to take programs that are longstanding in the community and find ways to tweak them, to keep them alive despite pandemic conditions. So the activation of the Lions Park Lawn, a project that was mentioned earlier by Rajah as one of our major capital projects, was reinvigorating for the west side of Costa Mesa. Going back to 2019, you know, when we had events like, as pictured there on the left with the mayor hosting a Fourth of July extravaganza, we missed a lot of those events during that pandemic. And to find ways to recreate them and bring them back to the community often meant turning over, you know, opportunities that we'd never considered before, like virtual events. You know, we did a virtual Scarecrow Fest back in 2020. We hope this year to have a Scarecrow Fest. We are planning it in October of this year at Lions Park. Snoopy House, a longstanding beloved event- a longstanding beloved event that's usually hosted here at City Hall. Staff were able to navigate on the fly and do a drive-through Snoopy House event in collaboration with the Power of One Foundation and Ikea, which I think was remarkable. And as my first Snoopy House event here in the city of Costa Mesa, I thought they did a pretty darn good job. There's the Extravaganza, a partnership event with Turelli Realty that took, again, a longer, a longstanding tradition here in the city of doing an egg hunt and making it a more of a virtual-type opportunity. It was a scavenger hunt of sorts where the, the community was invited to go park-to-park in search of these giant eggs. And not only did they have to find the eggs, but they had to perform some sort of a task or activity once they got there to make it interactive for all of the families. There's pictures there of restoration through I Love Costa Mesa Day. There's Creatures with Kids. That's at our day camp programs over the summer. And pictures of the different day camp activities and Movies in the Park that we were able to hold this year. We also have pictures of the, what I consider to be one of our greatest Concert in the Park events, which is a, a combination of three concerts all rolled into one. We had the Mariachi Juvenal Her, I'm going to back butcher this, Herencia Michoacana Mariachi Band, the youth mariachi band. We had Jasmine Fields. And we had the Tijuana Dogs that all entertained the community just past July with over 3,500 people in attendance. We have the pictures of the movies, which, again, the collaborative efforts that I think were, were amazing for the community. Did we skip a slide? We spent time at home during the, the pandemic and staff were able to create the virtual community center and provide activities online to people to participate in with their families. And I think it was a great opportunity, especially mid-pandemic when they didn't know what other opportunities they had and parents were struggling to find things for them, for their kids to do while they were at home. Before continuing on, I would really like to thank council, not only for your support, your continued support of this event, but for your participation in these events. You know, you often show up to a lot of our fun activities, serve as judges for contests, or just, you know, serve as MCs for, for concerts and really take part. And I think that makes it more interactive for our staff to see that the council really believes and invest themselves in their time in our programs. With that, I'd also like to thank, obviously, Loriann, the city manager, for her continued support in bringing me on during a difficult time and, you know, kind of the freedom that we've had to really explore and push the boundaries for providing programs to the community. With that, I'd also like to say without, you know, I don't want to leave them out, but the staff in my department when I first arrived were amazing. We brought on a couple of new staff, our recreation manager Monique and our analyst Kathy. But the staff that were here, Kevin and Ashley, before I even got here, are amazing. And all of the supervisors and coordinators that really put together amazing programs. You know, I don't think I could do what I do without them. So thank you to them. And speaking of thanking people, it's the, the building blocks of the community, the partners that we have. First off, we, we, you know, council approved a memorandum of understanding for our support of SOI to save our youth center and the wonderful program opportunities that they have excuse me, over in west side Costa Mesa. OC Parks, their collaborative efforts on bringing Perez Park to the community over on the east side. There's the OC Healthcare Agency and all of their support of Project Room Key, which has been mentioned prior during the presentation. Lighthouse Community Church for providing a temporary shelter for more than two years to, to the city and to our residents. We'd like to thank Ikea for furnishing the shelter. As Susan mentioned, their, their efforts, their, their donation was amazing. And I don't think we could have done their project without them. And then a whole collaborative efforts with the, the new shelter with, between CityNet, Trellis, the Mercy House, Costa Mesa Sanitation District, and the city of Newport Beach and everything they did to bring the shelter to a reality. And last but not least, all of our partner organizations that have helped us provide food, groceries to the community, and that includes the Power of One Foundation, Meals on Wheels, Orange County, Second Harvest, and Fresh Beginnings. So with that, we, you know, we couldn't do everything we do as a city without these nonprofit partners. And so I'm really grateful to, to have these relationships with them as well. So thank you. And I look forward to seeing you out there as programs continue to reopen.
Mayor and City Council, to further add to all the fantastic work by our Parks and Community Services Department, I'm here to provide you a snapshot of the incredible work that the city manager's office executes day in and day out as it relates to community outreach and engagement. Community engagement is a priority of not only the city council, but also our city manager and our city management team. For our office, community engagement is at the forefront of what we do. Just in the City Clerks Division, which is our stellar team that is instrumental in ensuring transparency and maintaining city legislative history, the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, preparation and distribution of city council agendas, managing of the city documents such as contracts, deeds, leases, ordinances, resolutions, and election information. The City Clerk's Office Public Engagement Metrics show that there was over 1,000 public records requests received, which was an increase of 14% in 2020. This is certainly a notable increase from the previous years. Also, our Concierge Services Team experienced a 24% increase in the volume of phone calls received. It's also important to note that the Concierge Team is a critical component of the department. During the pandemic, this team was essential in responding to constituent inquiries, providing COVID-related information, and providing the public information on modifications to the city's hours of operations, modifications to programs and services. Another important asset to our department is the Constituent Services Team. This team was established in 2019 by the city council. And the Constituent Services Team is responsible for managing constituent services, legislative research and analysis, coordination with governmental offices at federal, state, and local levels, coordinating assists with special projects, and also ensuring that the mayor and city council are fully briefed and prepared for council meetings, press events, community meetings, and special events. The Constituent Services Team has been instrumental in providing vital services to constituents, community, local businesses, and council members. This team is led by our Chief of Staff, Alex Gonzalez. And since its formation, the team has prepared and distributed nearly 450 certificates, proclamations, and awards in recognition of residents, local businesses, and community organizations, as we witnessed tonight. Some of the special projects include a robust census campaign that included a food drive and face mask giveaway, which was in partnership with SOI Foundation and the Office of Assembly Member, Cadi Petri Norris. The team also conducted over 15 virtual town halls, including two in Spanish. The team has made over 700 constituent contacts. This team responds to resident inquiries and works with various departments to coordinate responses and provides excellent customer service. Additionally, the team sent over 150 letters on behalf of the mayor and the city council. This includes letters on legislative matters and special initiatives. Next, our Communications and Marketing Team works diligently on our community outreach and engagement efforts. To encourage and promote civic participation as well as raise awareness, our team has implemented a combination of strategies and tools that produce meaningful engagement. To achieve this, we utilize a variety of mediums to reach our residents, businesses, and community partners through our city website, news blog, television channel, printed materials, and a number of social media channels. The city's Facebook page experienced a 34% increase in followers in 2020. The city Instagram account experienced a 183% increase in followers. Our Twitter account increased over 31%. And the team implemented the Nixol Mass Notification System for the city hall messaging. And our next door, our, our next door, our reach is now about 37,000. Additionally, the Police and Fire Rescue Department's social channels continue to see consistent growth as well. Now on to our next team. The award-winning Costa Mesa video team continues to produce top-quality work. As a testament of this team's excellence, this team received an astounding 27 awards for production excellence since 2019. Including an unprecedented 7-for-7 at the most recent Star Awards, the team entered seven categories and came away with first-place trophies in all seven categories, including the highly coveted Overall Excellent Award. Can we take a pause to applaud the wonderful work of this team? As I said, this amazingly talented team has produced over 260 videos in the last year. If that wasn't enough, the team also initiated the city's first-ever podcast hosted by the mayor and city council called Costa Mesa Now. The team has also been instrumental in covering community events and celebrations year-round. In addition to covering our community events, the team produced a number of COVID-related and informational videos. Also during the past couple of years, our team has really ramped up our Spanish-language communications and productions, including the introduction of the Spanish version of the Costa Mesa Minute, El Minuto. As you can imagine, the communications team has been working relentlessly since the start of the pandemic. Visits to the website are up and press release views alone more than doubled in 2020. COVID messaging was not only the one thing that has kept us busy. We had an active 2020 census campaign as well as messaging for the 2020 election and more. I'm extremely proud of the work our teams in communications and marketing, constituent services, and the city clerk's office have accomplished during these unprecedented times. And under your leadership, our Costa Mesa team continues to produce high quality and high quantity of work. These achievements are notable, especially considering the size of the team and the variety of the work. And now, I will turn it over to our great leader, city manager Loriann Farrell Harrison.
I just want to take a moment to thank everybody in the audience for listening to us, for hearing about how excited we are about the work that we do. It's an honor and privilege to serve you. We are servant leaders. We are in government because we love this work. And so I know this presentation was probably a lot longer than anyone expected. But two things. One, we've done a lot of work over the past two years to make sure that we were giving you the high-quality service that you pay for and that you deserve. And we love what we do. And so thank you for sitting through this. Thank you, council, for your guidance and your leadership. We have a super-short video to share with you that kind of just encapsulates what we've done. But I'm looking forward to the strategic planning retreat on Monday and what the future brings. Just to the, to the council, we can't do all this again. So, you know, this is just, this was an unprecedented time and an unprecedented volume of work. And so we're proud of it, but we need, we need to get a little bit of sleep. I want to thank three people before we show this short video. I want to thank Hadassah Jakar because she put this presentation together. Hadassah has lived in City Hall for the past three weeks, literally, just here till all hours of the night to put together a pretty comprehensive, robust, and very visually appealing presentation. Hadassah, we're so lucky to have you. And she's a rising star in the organization. And I couldn't be more proud to have her as part of my team. Alma Reyes, who chased all the departments down to get all the good statistics and information and is always like the emotional support for everybody in the city manager's office. She inspires me. She takes good care of me.